... Welcome to the Monday, June 5 regular meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask Vice Chairman Morris if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, thank you for many blessings we receive. Please give us the strength and the guidance to govern appropriately today. By name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I now consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda? Do I hear a motion?
Moved approved agenda stands, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and second to approve the published agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Asian unanimously, Madam Clerk. Consent agenda.
Moved approved consent agenda stands, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Asian unanimously as well, Madam Clerk. This time, I'll open the floor for public comment period. Period consists of 30 minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes in order to speak. First I have on the list is Mr. James Thomas.
Let me set my timer up so I don't exceed my allocation. As I said earlier, I'm here to present a problem. And that problem is, is we'd like to have our name back. What our name is, is Spout Springs. Right? First mention I found was in 1851 in relationship to the Plank Road. Right? We're 93 out of 772 cities in North Carolina population-wise. So we're in the top 100, but we don't have a name. Now, up until 1923, we had a mayor, we had a post office, we had a general mercantile, we had a water tower, we had a train station. We were the heart and soul of Western Harnett, right? It wasn't until the early '70s, when we established the Spout Springs Fire Department, actually in 1968, that we started to see a population growth. Now, what does it matter? Why is it important? I've talked to a lot of businesses on 2487. They're having a problem, right? Not just in hiring people, but getting the people to pick up food and take it to the people, right? They get calls from food truck people, or whatever they're called, that in Cameron... Well, no, I'm not in Cameron. I'm not in Sanford. I'm not in Bunleve or Broadway. I'm in Spout Springs, North Carolina, right? I got a whole list of historical artifacts. I shared one with Mr. Nicole. We actually were going to have a colony from the Scandinavia just prior to World War I because of the lumber. That's what created us. That's what brought us to, right? My proposal is one of two things. One, get the post office to re-designate our zip code to give us a Spout Springs postal zip code, or put a couple of signs on 2487, not like this Department of Transportation, a little green one. One of them's been knocked down for so long, I don't even remember when it was knocked down, but real signs that says, "You've now entered Spout Springs, North Carolina, the heartbeat of Western Harnett." That's all I got. And I did it under three minutes. I'm proud of myself.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Next up, Ms. Elizabeth Longman.
Good morning. Just wanted to update you real quick after my son let us know that we're having candy for drugs and public money paid pornography in the jails. They put him in Cumberland County. So he's no longer at Harnett County's expense. So Harnett County taxpayers are going to pay for him to be in Cumberland County because he told what was going on in the jailhouse. I hope that at some point, at some point, somebody here says, "This is absolutely irrational and against the law, and we need to do something about that sheriff in this county." When people speak up, you know, at risk of their lives, and this Board of Commissioners, you know, takes no action, takes no action, and human lives are jeopardized by their inaction. I have spoken to a few people who left the jail, who had been there for a few months and who left the jail and are no longer in jail and are able to speak freely. And they have also talked about, they said that the gangs are now running the jail. It's just gang, it's like you're walking into a gang territory completely. They have said it. They said it is, it is a dire situation. But, you know, we're only as good as our worst. Doesn't matter how good you think you are when you look at the least or the among us. And that's how, you know, it's going on. If we are all law-abiding citizens, all, not all except for one, you know, right now in Harnett County, it's all except for one can should be law-abiding citizens. And that, that's not fair to anybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Alan Longman.
Alan Longman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bonlove. Reason for me talking today is to really hate what she has said, is to probably bribe the people in the GLC who would not speak to the grand jury. You also supposedly give them pot, whatever they have, to keep them quiet and happy. That needs to be investigated. They should have went to the people who were recently released from prison and asked them what their story was because he can't be bribed from the outside. They can be threatened. The other thing I'm talking about is the Board of Education. We had a meeting with the superintendent, I think it was Fletcher or something like that. And he was talking about the girl that was being, was forced to poop in her pants and humiliated. The thing is, I noticed that he had absolutely no empathy for the individual at all. And this is a common problem. We can't have good old boys always being the superintendent. We need people who actually care and be able to relate to the students, and that's all of them. I sat there and listened to nothing but rambling. How do I get myself out of a situation? I'm here for you, but the point is, when he ended up talking, when he ended up acting, you could see he had absolutely no empathy for anybody that wasn't out of his own. And I've seen this time and time again, even presently. We need people who teach people things, not to sit there and have the same old lonely go-on, teaching the same old ways, indoctrinating them probably more than anything. You see this in the classes, they have civic classes, where they sit around there, they're able to teach the kids about politics, about the community, and everything out of the man's mouth is supporting Republican or conservative views outright. What right do you have to represent one side of something to the kids? In some way, isn't that what the school system is doing? I see this time and time again. The reason you educate people is to rise above their culture. How can you teach people, the people in charge, or people who cannot learn, change from their culture, and represent everybody? You need to represent full, rounded ways of what education is, not pointy. You need to represent full, rounded ways of what education is, not pointed to Baptists, to Baptists, to the Methodists, or to some other line of political thought. Either need to get rid of the civics class, I think it's not bad, and you need not to have any more input to the political system, such as doing registrations. I think it's inappropriate to be done under that supervision, and don't have people indoctrinated to ways of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last on the list, I have Mr. Rebecca Brock.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to say that I'm very pleased with what I see in the budget, that you have in your consideration new employees that could be employed by the county if you approve the budget. I thought those were really important because the county is growing, and I wanted to say I hope that you do approve it because those, it was a variety of different employees were needed in the different departments. I know that you're looking for a new Economic Development Director, and I wish you, posthaste, that gets done quickly, because with Harnett County being the largest employer in the county, and the need to bring more jobs to the county, that's a really important component that is now missing that we need to fill. I'd also like for your consideration, as you move forward with employees, that you consider a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director or employee, because this was mentioned by Barbara McCoy two years ago, that the county should have some diversity training, this was before your time, Mr. Trout, but that was tabled because of a current proposed Senate bill at that particular time. But I think we need to revisit that, that the county employee structure should reflect the differences, the different races that are in our county, and have the county government be a leader in this, because you are the largest employer in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. This time, I will now close the floor for public comment. Moving on to a public hearing on Harnett County's fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four water and sewer system development fees. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, we've had several work sessions where we talked about water and sewer system development fees for the county, and I'll just briefly give a synopsis of what we talked about, and then I'll go into the resolution, and, Mr. Chairman, then you can open the public hearing and then consider adoption of the resolution when it concludes. So every five years, water and sewer systems in North Carolina are required to consider water and sewer system development fees, and the state requires us to have an analysis done to determine what those fees should be. So we went through that process, you have to have a forty-five day commute period and post the analysis on your website. We did that in late March, we started, that ended in the middle of May, and now it's time for the public hearing. You had a draft report at that time in your packet, now you have a final report. The only thing that changed in there was the proposed fees that we presented earlier in a work session. If you remember, those fees for a standard meter size in the original draft, we could charge up to thirty-eight hundred and forty-three hundred roughly for water and sewer for a standard three-quarter inch meter size, and we proposed that that be three thousand and four thousand respectively, so not going all the way up to the top for consideration for people who need that. Little bit of buffer there. So, and also, there's also a schedule in the new final report that goes into what each service would cost. So if you get a two-inch service, naturally those fees are higher. So if you have any questions about that report, I'll be glad to try to answer them. If it's really technical and I can't answer them, we've got some folks online from Will Dan Financial who provided the analysis from us, they can even give us those answers as well. So the resolution just basically lays out what the requirements are in state law, and it gives you an opportunity to consider that later. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have. Not, we can just go on with the public hearing.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Steve Ward?
I have a question.
Okay.
It might be a little out of order to what you're presenting here today. Still have people calling me about the tap fee. Will that be published in the paper, the date that we are gonna start collecting the tap fee?
You mean what's in the budget about dry tap fees?
Yeah, the dry tap fee.
It's being sent out in their bills.
Okay.
So nobody's being charged any dry tap fees now. We've already gone through all that, because the board authorized it at the last meeting, so all that stopped.
I got a call. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you had contacted the public and let the public know, because this is a serious issue for the public.
Right, we're sending it out in the water bills, notices to everybody.
I got a call from Mr. Burns this week from, still got a lot here.
Yes.
Got a notification that this will be the last month of the fees on, so they're out.
Correct. So administratively, we've already gone, I told you, we were trying to get that done by July first, we've already accomplished that.
I went on, told him, called Rick County, would come out the dark ages and ketchup, would you all the things, if it's better down there?
Okay.
No other questions or comments? At this time, I will now open the floor for a public hearing regarding Harnett County's twenty-three twenty-four water and sewer system development fees. Anybody who'd like to speak in regards to this topic, now's the time.
There is a lot of development happening in Harnett, and we know change is inevitable, but there are those homes that have been here for a while and were never connected to the sewer system. As the hundreds, if not thousands of homes get built and established and linked to that sewer system, when do homes that were never linked to that sewer system get linked? Because we're going to be seeing the same rates as those brand-new developments who are linked to the sewer system. There are still thousands of homes in Harnett still doing septic tanks in their yard, but we're going to be charged the same as those who are able to use the sewer system. So does the county have anywhere, does the Water Department have anywhere in the plans to link those already established homes who, at the time they were built, they were in the hinterlands, but are now as close to dead center to the urbanization of Harnett as anywhere else? Will those properties get a chance to be part of the sewer system that they will be paying for with increased fees?
Mr. Ward, would you like to speak in regards to that at all, or not?
Sure, I'll be glad to. I think if I can interpret what Mr. Longman is saying is that, you know, sewer, a lot of people want sewer and a lot of people don't want sewer. Everybody is charged the same water rate, so as far as differences in fees, you only pay sewer fees if you have access to sewer. Somebody with a septic tank does not pay any sewer fees. For example, if I've got water and public sewer, I have a sewer bill and a water bill, and that total is combined. If I just have a septic tank, like in my residence, and I'm happy with my septic tank, I don't have any issues with my septic tank, and I really don't want public sewer, until it becomes such an issue that maybe I would need public sewer. So I just pay a water bill, as do the majority of folks in Harnett County. We're still a rural county, I know that's changing, and there'll always be opportunities, and we always plan that as more and more homes come on, a lot of the newer developments are getting sewer, that's simply because they want to build, that provides them more density, they can get more lots and more houses on the same acreage of land. And the developers pay for that sewer that's put in, and they charge us, the fees that we're considering now, they pay all those system development fees to have capacity in order for us to treat that sewer. So I think it's a pretty fair process, the way it works now, and as growth happens, that growth should pay for any future sewer development.
I want to piggyback off what he just said, I'm glad to hear that you just have water, and that's what I've got. So my concern in Bun Level is, you know, being clear. So are you forcing me to get septic? Is what I want to know, because I'm fine with just my water bill, and I just feel like when I talk to the people in Bun Level, everybody is basically, well, you can't say everybody, majority are just concerned that we're being forced to get on sewers, so we're not being forced.
I can answer that question for you. Some, a couple of years ago, there was a grant that came into Harnett County, and it was a possibility that they were saying, these grants are for sewer, for water, the water system and sewer. And I contacted some of the citizens in Bun Level to see if they wanted sewer in Bun Level, but it was very clear to me that most of those people that had septic tanks did not want sewer. So we didn't pursue that, because that's a choice that you had to make. If we ran the sewer lines in, then people would be expected to hook on to the sewer, but you don't have to. But most of the citizens there and the leaders there in that particular area, they know, they were already on septic tank, and they was pleased with what they were getting, so we never pursued it.
Okay, so to me, what I think I'll be able to tell the people is, I think this is basically for contractors that are trying to get these, like you just said about all these homes on these small spots, you know, three houses with one driveway that are look like a new trailer park, is what I'm starting to see now. Just putting people together, just jamming them together on this farm land that's been three and four generations, but now that great-grandchild decided they go ahead and sell this land, because they're not farming on it. So I just felt like that was the next thing that was coming to Bun Level, to just have a modified trailer park on a, just a slab of concrete, nobody's doing foundations anymore. Maybe I'm just too old and don't understand the new thing, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Alan Longman, two three four Hamilton Road, Bun Level. The discussion is, a lot of the land is underwater in areas, so you want to have a septic tank, it's going to overflow all over, on top of everything, and contaminate the drinking water. Some people still use drinking water from the ground and wells, you have to watch that now that you have cesspools all over the place. I think cesspools will become a problem with the people in between those that have sewer systems and those that don't. And I think as long as you have flooding in other areas such as Dunn is a very low area as far as to the water cycle, you're going to have sewer and stuff run into everything, and that's going to eventually cause disease and other problems. So I think the way to look long-term is, yeah, you can choose to go in and not to go in, their sewer systems or their septic tanks are going to go bad, and it makes more sense to put them into the sewer system, so the capacity you have to build be if everybody eventually is going into the sewer system. And it's for better health, better society, a better community. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in regards to this topic? Seeing nobody move, I will now close the floor for public hearing regarding the water and sewer system development fees. And I will also entertain a motion regarding resolution.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented.
Got a motion and a second?
If you could, would you please include it in that motion?
I got you. I have a motion and a second in order to approve the Harnett County's FY twenty-three twenty-four water sewer and system development fees. So, how would you like this said?
Acting on behalf of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners and the water and sewer system.
I can do that if it passes, correct? After it passes? All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve the water system and development fees, is there any discussion?
Well, you need to do it on the board's half, on behalf of the water and sewer districts in the county.
Can I get you to revise your motion, Commissioner Wetherspoon?
Yeah, I'll revise it.
Okay, I move a motion that the Harnett County Board of Commissioners and the governing body of all water and sewer districts of Harnett County consider or adopt a resolution to adopt the water and sewer system development fees.
I have a motion and a second in order to adopt the resolution regarding the Harnett County's water and system development fees. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Here's your names, Lady Madden, clerk. Moving on to the approval of the Harnett County Fiscal Year twenty-three twenty-four budget and budget ordinance.
Chairman, since the last meeting, we had one change that occurred in the budget, and that was that after discussion with Sheriff Wayne Coats, he agreed to utilize about two-hundred and twenty-four thousand of his asset forfeiture fund that he manages in order to purchase three of the vehicles, three of the four vehicles, and the other equipment necessary for the new officers that we'll be adding. With that reduction, that changed and that lowered our amount of required use of fund balance in the new budget, and so it was a appreciated change and will assist us as we work to balance our budget at the end of the year.
Any questions? Question? Do I hear a motion?
Moved approved budget, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second in order to approve the Harnett County Fiscal Year twenty-three twenty-four budget and budget ordinance, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Here's your names, Lady Madden, clerk. Thank you. Item number eight, consider the reappointment of Commissioner Brooks Matthews and Commissioner Louis Wetherspoon to the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership Board.
Moved approved.
A motion and a second to reappoint Commissioner Brooks Matthews and Commissioner Louis Wetherspoon to the Harnett County Economic Development Partnership Board, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Here's your names, Lady Madden, clerk. Item nine, consider the appointment and approval of an employment contract for Christine Wallace as a tax administrator for four years.
Thank you, Chair. After the conduction of the interview the other, last week, I met with Christine Wallace, and we negotiated terms of an agreement that would provide a four-year appointment for her with a starting salary of ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty-two, and the other terms of the contract are basically the same as those that were used in her acting tax administrator, just a few minor changes that were not necessary as she gets the four-year appointment.
I move to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the employment contract for Ms. Christine Wallace as a tax administrator for four years, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Here's your names, Lady Madden, clerk. Congratulations, Mr. Ward.
I would just like to say, Christina, you've done a great job considering, you know, what we've been through with the Tax Department for the last couple, many years now. I appreciate you.
That brings us to the county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you. The only item I'd like to add that was just reminded of today, jetport director, the Harnett County is actually going to be lucky to receive a runway overlay as a relay from the Department of Aviation with their expense. They're going to be going through and doing a number of improvements to extend the lifespan They're going to be going through and doing a number of improvements to extend the lifespan of the current runway. That project will be starting in approximately two weeks. It will give us the opportunity to extend the life of the pavement that we have. There will be some times that the runway will be closed, because when the work is done, it requires a cure time, and so notice it went out today to all airport users, and so they will be informed of those closing dates as we get closer to the actual date. So good, at no cost to us for these improvements, so it's a good thing.
You need budget amendments and rebates and refunds?
Yes, sir, excuse me. Yes, I need approval of the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director, and also a separate motion to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases from the tax administrator.
Thank you. Commissioners, in front of you, you have budget amendments requested by the Finance Director?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director. Any, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget amendments, passionately. Do I hear a motion to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the tax administrator. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes as well. Any items from new business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Ah, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.